The Chair will call the January 7th, 2020, meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
We'll do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory. Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Chair.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfeller.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, accorum is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to allow Alderman Proctor to join in the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There's no proclamations or presentations. So the Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the December 30th, 2019, City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor, motion vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open.
Alderman Proctor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the consent agenda passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-0...
Five.
I'm sorry, 2019-276, 2019-421, and 2019-430 remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those? Next item on the agenda is 2019-526, an ordinance amending Chapter 131 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by amending Section 131.07 prohibiting use of cannabis and adding Section 131.14, limiting the possession of use and use of cannabis. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2019-526 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Yeah, can you explain what this does again, just so everybody knows? You may recall that the state had passed a pretty sweeping revision of cannabis laws. What this is doing is to make certain that the city code provisions are consistent with the new state law. So it reflects essentially the definitions and directions, prohibitions, et cetera, under the state statute. So it does away with the old provisions and incorporates basically the provisions of the new state law.
Alderwoman Turner.
Is this the ordinance where the marijuana leaf...
Oh, if you pull your mic closer.
I'm sorry. Is this the ordinance where the marijuana leaf fund amendment was supposed to be placed on?
You had passed an amendment to this and the other provision regarding paraphernalia.
Right.
Which incorporated that change. So this is being, would be adopted as amended with that amendment that was adopted at the committee.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was on this one as well.
You're exactly correct, it was for both.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes, those opposed, vote no, the voting is now open.
Alderman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and add to first reading Agenda Number 2019-535, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Central Illinois Communications Doing Business as Illinois Times for the design, printing, and distribution of the 2020 Visitor's Guide in an amount not to exceed $59,250 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion on the, yeah, it should be 2020-535, not 2019.
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the City Council? Like Director McCarthy wanted to talk about the budget coming up, or?
I do, I do. The number of that last one that was added to the first reading, what did it say?
2020-535.
Twenty-three ordinance this year so far. We haven't done it.
Counselor.
We will, we'll...
He'll take care of it.
The clerk and I will make sure the numbering is correct according to the agenda. That's, it should be then, I guess, 2020, maybe five, maybe 24?
24.
24, okay. We'll, we'll correct that, clerk and I. Thank you.
I have, can I, I have one question.
Alderwoman Turner.
I hate to keep talking about cannabis all the time.
Later.
However. Last week, I asked about two things, and Director McCarthy was very kind to put in motion the different line items for the, for the things that I asked for. Thank you very much, that was, that was very helpful. So now for the, the second one about the ordinance for the mandated reporting with regard to police contact related to cannabis.
Yeah, a report, we're gonna work on some language. You asked if we could include it in the code.
Right.
We just couldn't get it.
Oh, no, I know. So do you think we can have it on first reading for next week?
Possibly. I actually wanted to talk to the chief about it.
Okay.
How we would appropriately describe it.
Okay, I just, I just don't want us to get too far into things before we have something in place. Okay, I'm done talking about cannabis now.
Director McCarthy?
Sure, just want to remind everyone that the budget hearings do begin tomorrow night. We'll start with the overview, and then we'll have the elected officials go, and then we have Thursday night at 5:30. We'll take a break next week and be back at it on Wednesday, the 22nd, and Thursday, the 23rd, at 5:30, to wrap up the hearings.
Any other old business or unfinished business? Any new business? Alderwoman Connelly.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could have, Daryl Harris could come up, just to talk about a situation that's come up in Ward Eight. So just for background for people who aren't on Nextdoor app or have been talking to me for the last two or three days, because I feel like this is all I've been talking about. We had a situation in Ward Eight where there is a house with a landlord who does not reside in Springfield. And the situation has gotten to the point where, it was rat infestation, I'll just say it. Everyone else can just go take their Silkwood showers later. It's horrible, it's, we've got rats climbing the walls, the neighborhood is concerned about it. And Mr. Harris, you've been very helpful, staying in constant contact, and I appreciate that. If you could just give us an update on the situation, so we can make sure that everyone is understanding what's going on, because obviously, a greater area than just that immediate neighborhood is concerned about these rats and their mobility.
Well, initially, it was brought to our attention on the December 23rd, and then, of course, that was during the afternoon time, so we weren't able to get to it until December 26th, because we're celebrating Christ's birthday on the 24th and 25th. So based on the 26th, our inspector went out there to the site and discovered that there was some rat traps that had actually gone off during the time that he was inspecting the site. At that time, he had taken the proactive approach of reducing the abatement process as far as that 30 days, he reduced it down to 14 days, thereby giving the owner till January the 10th.
To this Friday.
To get it addressed this Friday. Subsequently, I think you had, you see several phone calls from yourself.
Yes.
And you and I talked about at length. The other thing that we did to ensure that that person was contacted, as far as the owner, because the property is, is under a trustee type environment with the bank, was able to find out who that was, contact that particular person who's responsible for that property. Our inspector had a conversation with the owner of the property. She had informed him at that time that she would be complying with the city and what the city was requesting, which was to have exterminator come out there and abate the situation. That following, that was Friday, she was trying to get it done over the weekend. I know you called me on Monday saying no one's seen our truck. So we called again, then...
I think I did let it go until like 8:30 at least, right?
Yeah. So we called again, then kept in contact with you, we called again to make sure that that is taken care of, because it's a serious issue when it comes to rats and the things that they carry and the diseases and things of that nature. So therefore, today, we did, I had them call Orkin, which was the provider, which she had expressed that she would be using, to see whether or not there was inquiry regarding that property. Orkin had reassured us that on Thursday of this January the 9th, they would be addressing that property.
And then, so, when we were talking about it, you made it clear, because obviously, there are concerns about migration of these rats. And, and we're going to be doing, there's gonna be treatment of the storm sewers additionally.
Yeah, follow-up, we put a work order in to how the storm sewers treated that area as well, mainly because I was concerned, but we had some work done in the particular sewers in that area.
Okay, so, and, so this is a larger perspective picture that we're looking at, to not just the immediate home, but the impact on the entire...
We take the holistic approach and stuff to dealing with these type of issues. So though you may say, Daryl, take a look at this, we're trying to look at what all could be involved and what all could be leaning, leading to the particular problems, so...
Right, and I appreciate that, because I know there are people in the surrounding neighborhoods who are very concerned about that moving around. So in terms of this property owner, is this sort of one of the situations where this owner would be added to the, or be on the watch for the chronic offenders kind of a list?
Well, right now, this owner seems like they're complying. I did go back and do, do some research on it. The last violation, from my understanding, with that owner was back, I believe in the summertime for weed violation, which that owner abated it. Being part of that, I don't see another violation to 2006.
Okay, but there have been two violations within the last six months?
There has been one violation that's abated, and then this violation that probably be abated too. Looks like it's going to be abated, potentially.
Right, and, and we're gonna be, you'll be checking on it on Friday?
We'll be checking it on Thursday.
Thursday, when they're there.
To ensure that Orkin's out there at the site.
Is Orkin gonna be contacting you before they go over there, or how will you know?
We had asked Orkin, since they had scheduled out what time they would be there, and they let us know.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is, we'll follow up with the inspector, have them go out there to...
Thank you very much, I really appreciate...
But also receive a documentation stuff from...
Right.
Any exterminator to say that they actually treated what they did find, so we can make sure that no one just didn't go out there to the site and say, "I saw nothing." So we wanna make sure that even though you're going out to the site, that something was actually treated as well.
Wonderful, thank you very much, and I appreciate Public Works being on top of this and you being so responsive with all the questions that I've been, I've been asking you a lot of questions.
No problem.
And I certainly appreciate that, but, you know, try to relay that information to the neighborhood so that they understand that, that the city is, is on top of this issue.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Daryl, is the Health Department involved with this too?
No, normally, it's taking, these type of issues, the Health Department actually contact us.
So, is, why isn't there a situation that we could placar a house like that shouldn't be occupied?
Say that one more time, sorry.
Said, why isn't there a situation where we couldn't placar that for health reasons to, for non-occupancy?
Because there was a tenant in there.
Right, there was a tenant in, in the place. But I'll say this, there had been some extreme situations, like we had one in Alderwoman Turner's area that was, actually, she came out and met me out there, when we called around 9:00, 10:30 at night, and that was extreme, meaning that it had factors that basically boiled down to human fetuses and animal fetus and rats, roaches, insects, and several children living in this space. That one, we did a, you know, immediate, asked them to be addressed and called, we got ahold of the property manager that night, had them come out there, and the people were then assisted, as far as finding other living accommodation until those matters were addressed.
So, so the rat and mouse problem was not severe enough that some, we had to tell people they couldn't live there?
No, first of all, there's eviction already going on, some people weren't present or leaving out of the complex. This is where someone was actively living, and we saw, felt that they'll be probably staying there. This one, the particular one that Alderwoman Connelly was referring to, there's actually eviction process going on.
Well, and, if I can just say, I think the tenants moved out voluntarily.
Right.
My understanding is...
Well, I was just saying, but it was also eviction notice also being forwarded to the city.
But my understanding is that you'll go in afterwards to, to ensure that the work has been done properly, and at that point, if there's enough damage, would you be able to then placard it to say?
Right.
This is not...
Right, so it's follow-up, what we're doing in Europe, in every case, I'm gonna say this, is different. In Europe, in this particular case regarding this property, what we're doing, and we'll do a follow-up into, which we're asking the owner to provide us interior inspection, so we can go in and actually inspect the interior of the property as well. Now, owner cannot not to, and then you're gonna go to the courts and all that, but normally, they comply. In this case, the person said they're willing to comply.
And I will say one thing with that, with that inspection, because I understand there were issues with the wiring being tuned through with, with these rats, so that, I'm not sure, you know, do you normally check to see that appliances work and that electricals, okay, that's, and that's what we...
That's part of the interior inspection, once we get access into the interior.
Okay.
Alderwoman DeSento.
I guess, I'm kinda confused, why wouldn't the Health Department be able to, to say it's uninhabitable? I mean, wouldn't they have the authority to do that?
I'm sure, I don't know the counties, grassing all the stuff on that, but normally, the county, when it's in the city's proper, the county help us assist them in those type of cases, like for instance, when it came...
They're passing the buck on us. Sorry? They're passing the buck on us.
We get a lot of, we do a lot of services for the county, but it's also in our city, in our city boundaries.
I understand.
And therefore, like, for instance, when...
But we don't have our own Health Departments, my point.
We share, right, the county, right. So basic, and in the case of stuff we're talking about with Alderwoman Turner's area, the county that assists, like with the removal of animals and things that makes them providing assistance for the people to have a place to stay that night. So it's a joint venture type thing that's going on with that.
Alderman Redpath, I will tell you, so, I mean, I work in Department of Public Health, and I asked about that too. I said, would one of our local health departments not get involved in this? And they said, normally, with local health departments, with the State Department and even, you know, EPA, which were some of the agencies that were brought up, they would refer people back to their municipal housing department, which is why, you know, I think it's really important that our housing people have the tools that they need, when you've got a clear public health and safety situation, to deal with it in a very, in a more efficient manner. And that's something I think we need to be, we need to be looking at and making sure that we've got those, those are strong enough.
Do we have to get an order from the court to do that, or?
No, well, we do plac, we have a, we placar their instructions, saying that you can't occupy, the instructions have to tend us to remove.
Alderwoman DeSento.
Thank you. This case appears to be extreme, rats on the house on the roof, chewing through wiring, there are kids, it's been warm outside. I know I've spent a good part of the past week and over the holidays outside and at the park with my son, so, I mean, if there's kids running around this neighborhood, that is a public health situation. And 14 days, and she waits till the second to last day to abate this problem? I mean, yeah, that, that shows a clear lack of, you know, regard for anyone in the neighborhood for, you know, the, the, rats run, so they run over to other streets. Ward Six is just a couple streets to the east and to, and to the, the south. So, I mean, this is a big problem, and it's very troublesome that this, this landlady who threatens everybody with, you know, my husband's a real estate attorney, and we're gonna, we'll take you to court if you sue us for this. I mean, this is a big problem. As someone who has a young child who runs the streets, I think we need to do better. I think giving them 14 days is way too long, that's way too generous.
Well, also, part of your argument and wider discussion, I'm not aware of those things, I may be part of the discussion you've had, we have not been privy to that information you just shared, but let me say, for the record, when the notice initially was sent, the notice was sent to the bank, who were, as authorized, authorization for that property...
Because it's a trust.
We went to seek out who the trustee was. So in true fairness, she probably did not receive the notice, because it goes to the bank, because that's the actual true owner of the property. So we sought a little bit deeper and found out who the actual trustee was.
So Corporal, counsel, what would the, can we shorten the timeframe? We have to have a change of code, or how would you?
In some ways, it's a matter of discretion on the part of the department. It allows up to 30 days, depending on the circumstances. I think in this case, I think Daryl said that the inspector at the time shortened it to 14 days. So there is, it does allow discretion on the part of the department, based on the extent of the problem they're trying to address.
How about two days? I mean, this is a clear and present danger to, you know, kids, animals, humans, this is, we have to do better.
Well, and, and I will say...
So what's the, I guess, can we do that, Corporal, counsel?
Well, I think we could...
If you go two days right now, you're right back to Friday, I mean...
Well, no, we know that we're talking about going forward.
Oh, you mean in the future?
Yes.
I guess from the legal standpoint of it.
We had a discretion, and that, at that time, the inspector felt that with the person departing from the property, that the immediate dangers would, would be ceased. That's what that particular inspector felt. Now, in other cases where we had several children, the case that we had endorsed a community, there were several children involved, grandparents involved, great-grandparents involved, and conditions that was much more atrocious as this one. I mean, it was, you opened a door, and literally, mice and roaches were falling on you.
Jeez.
And this is something that, Chris, that I've, I've talked to Corporal and Counsel about, and I want to sit down and make sure, I mean, obviously, within, you know, state rest, statutory restrictions, but that we, we develop a better standard for a public health and safety criteria for situations. I mean, this, this shouldn't be put, the onus of making that decision shouldn't always be on the inspector, so they don't feel like, you know, I have to justify this. I think as a council, we need to say, we want to empower you to go in there and, and take control, because while the person who was in the apartment and who was moved out, their immediate safety was, was respected, I'm looking at this and thinking, they're storm sewers, and their backyards, I mean, rats are very mobile, and they have a short gestation period, they breed. What I would like to see is that we give your inspectors better tools. And I think right now, that might need to be a modification to our ordinances, and I will, I did spend the weekend a fair amount of time trying to go through them and read them and get a better sense of what would be a good way to modify this. Mr. Zerco is very kindly, we're gonna be sitting down together very soon, but I expect to bring something before council for everyone's consideration, so that we have a much better tool and, and our inspectors have more confidence that when there is a public health and safety issue, we should not be modifying 30 days, we should be maybe modifying five, you know, because this is disgusting. And, and it should, we, I, I mean, God forbid we get to another situation with, you know, cockroaches and mice and rats and feces, I mean, that's over the top.
Well, in that case, it was immediate, 24 hours, so...
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer.
This one could have been 24 hours too, in my opinion.
Here's the problem though, okay? So this, this lady, whoever owns it, they're gonna abate it.
Yes.
And they won't get a fine. The problem that we have is what, what we need to change the code to say is, when their people, when our inspectors and they're very good people, and they're, they're, they're very good at their job, and I, there's no way I could do what they do. But when they go out to a house, and it's bad, and they, they hit them for everything, there should be fines on everything they hit them, and those fines should have to, they don't get, go away, they have to pay that.
Yep.
Because what happens...
It's costing us money.
Excuse me, I was hanging around Doris, and she got me...
She's been sick for a month.
So, but what happens is, these guys go out, they, they abate it, and, and there's no fine. We've got to get tougher on this.
I agree.
We have to. And, and, you know what? It affects the bad landlords. That way, the good landlords, they don't get affected, because they take care of their property. You get a landlord that doesn't take care of their property, and we go out there, guess what? They're gonna get fined, and they know they're gonna get fined. And, and they can say, "Well, I just didn't know." Well, you gotta pay more attention to your property. And if you live out of town, too bad. And it's not just people that rent, it's homeowners. We got homeowners that, that throw garbage on the side of their houses. I've, I've got it out in Ward 10, I've had to call about it. We've had, we've had many times that I've had conversation with Daryl about this.
All the way out in Ward 10.
So it's all over the city. But we've got to get it to where when our inspectors go out, now, if they go out and there's, it's not called for, and they're not gonna write everybody up if, if it's not called for, but if it's called for, they get fined. And, and there's no way, I don't care if you go to administrative court, that just shows that you, that just proves that you go to administrative court to prove that you fixed the problem. That's, that's what, I mean, that's what has to happen here. You know, this comes up air every six months.
It does.
Let's get something together, and let's raise the fines, and when, when our inspectors go out, we got at least, look, look at the time that they've spent on this. The city needs to start recovering some of our costs that we spend on things like this.
So is that part of your research, Alderwoman Connelly, is the fine portion?
Yes, yes, and I will, I will say, I, I do like to do a lot of background and reading before I bring something to council, but I, you know, and I've been reaching out some, to some different parties too, and we've had, obviously, we've had input from our neighborhood associations, and, and I know we've got support there. We need better tools, we need bigger hammers, and I feel comfortable when I bring, when we do get something pulled together and bring it here, that it will be something that this council supports, because we all know good landlords are important for our community. I mean, we, not everyone wants to buy a house, not everyone needs to buy a house. It's important to have quality, safe, clean housing available, but these people who don't care, I mean, that, this, this house is located in a nice neighborhood in Ward Eight, in Springfield, it's a nice neighborhood. They're cute houses, you know, we've got our tree-lined streets, and then you've got one property with an owner, and I've been told, this landlord was told months ago that there were rats on the property, and, and a refusal to take that responsibility led to us getting to this point. And I'm, I'm, again, I always tell, I always, I always listen to my mom, you know, because she says to, but, you know, use your very polite words when you've got very impolite thoughts, because right now, my thoughts on this situation are not printable. So, really not printable.
Alderwoman Turner, did you have anything else?
No, actually, Ralph went on a rant, so I didn't have to.
He's so good for that, isn't he?
I know, I see you went on the rant, so I didn't have to, but I, I do think that the fines are very important, so thank you, Ralph, for, for bringing that, that thing up. And I do think that we do need to look at how we can revise our code, because just as with most things, we don't want to have to depend upon who's sitting in the chair making the decisions. the decisions. Now, I have to say that since I've been here, our Public Works Department, and most especially since Mr. Harris has been here, has been very good, very responsive. And, you know, I'm not saying this because Daryl is standing here, but he really uses very good judgment on when to go above and beyond what the code may say. And instead of doing 10 days, doing, you know, five days or one day or moving, moving things forward, he's very good at that. But I don't want us to have to rely on that and who knows, you know, what happens going forward. So we really do need to make those adjustments in the code.
We do, and we need our inspectors to not feel like they have to have Daryl Harris come out and rein inspect every job. I mean, we have good people who work here. They need to be authorized and enabled to do, to take more immediate action. I mean, it's, rats, these are health and safety issues. And it's not, you know, oh, your fascia isn't right or your gutters are filling up or you need to paint. Those are things where we can take a little patience with people maybe, but not this. This is, it is a public health and safety issue that we, and yeah, it needs to be addressed. And I will say, Daryl, again, none of this ranting is against your inspectors or your department because.
I welcome it. My mindset is how we improve the process.
Exactly.
So you get together and share the information with us. We'll tell you what is there and how we're going about it. Right now, we're using the tools and stuff what we have, and we're going to stay within the law.
Right.
So those things, I can assure you, that's what we have done. So even the things that you talked about earlier, about the creativity of Daryl Harris, no, I just read. And if I find a clause in there in which it calls that we can use that action, we're going to do it.
Trust me, that's creativity based on stuff I've seen.
Alderman McMinum, did you have?
Well, just to, you know, we want our inspectors to have all the tools they can get, and we're talking about several concepts at once here. The abatement is the time that you have to avoid fines. The placard authority, that's separate, and that can be on day one if the conditions are met. We, as Alderman Redpath was saying, we can placard. Our inspectors have authority to placard. So maybe they can review the circumstances that justify placarding, which is occupancy prohibited. I understand this situation. The inspector thought that, well, because there's a, an abandonment or a expulsion of the tenant, that that wasn't necessary. But it would have been still a good idea to put the placard on the house from my point of view, so they do have that authority.
And to follow up, Alderman McMinum, the thing is, is the placarding thing takes people out of danger at that point. That's the most important thing with the placard part of it.
And it puts, it's not a financial penalty.
Right.
A direct fine, but that unit cannot be rented, which is an indirect penalty on the landlord, on the owner. So it's a good tool and we got to use it.
Just to follow up.
I think we've done more placarding than you can imagine. I've been kind of this since I've been involved in this process.
Just to follow up with Alderman Conley, I have, as everybody probably does, I have a habitual offender in one of my neighborhoods that, I drove by there again tonight, they have, they've had garbage out on the side of their house for three months. You guys have been out there, we send them letter after letter after letter. They'll move it and then they'll put it right back. That's, we got to get a control on this thing. It's ridiculous.
And this is maybe what I, I'm not sure that I understand, and I don't know if Alderman Proctor's still on the phone.
Alderman Proctor?
He's asleep, Proctor.
We might, we might have lost him.
Yeah, no, you.
So my understanding though is Alderman Proctor worked on a chronic offenders ordinance. So wouldn't someone like that be hit by this?
Wouldn't.
Should be.
Shouldn't they be written up and shouldn't we be used? I mean, do we use that frequently, the chronic offenders?
We have, we have used it recently. What I'm saying is that even that chronic offender, from my understanding, has an 18 month period. When that period expires, you're starting all over again.
But like, if you've got someone who has garbage piled up.
I got garbage.
And then three months later.
It's garbage.
Garbage piled up, would that not be chronic? I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know. Does that not qualify you for a chronic offense?
After the three, yes.
And to this one house, they've been to this house several times. The police have been to this house several times on different, it's just a problem neighbor. And it brings down, it brings down the neighborhood.
Alderman Donlan?
Yeah, I think that's.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want clarification on the whole abatement issue because it's come up time and time again. It comes up at council all the time. Corporation counsel, in Chuck's example, with this, with this residence that continually has this garbage problem, if they correct the problem, does the statute say that we have to make the fine go away or is that a discretion of the staff?
Well, it depends. I do agree with what Alderman McMinum started to talk about just a minute. We're really mixing up several concepts here. Historically, the city has always operated on the basis of seeking voluntary compliance. So there are not fines in place when, for example, a quote, a ticket is issued or a notice of violation is issued, provided they comply. If they don't, then ultimately, it's referred over for the administrative court. But even administrative court, if they show up, if they come to court, they have corrected it and the inspector verifies correction, then there is no fine unless that happens, that three times in that period. So what you're talking about is a pretty fundamental change of the approach the city's used over the last few decades of saying there would be a fine from the, for day one. Whether they correct it or they don't correct it, you're going to pay a fine. And so that's where you're getting into a code discussion where when the inspector would issue a notice of violation, it wouldn't matter, under the discuss, the policy discussion that we're having now, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't matter if the person corrected it, like weeds or something else, they're going to pay that fine. That's what you're talking about is to begin a process where you're changing up, seeking, if you will, compliance and giving some kind of a carrot, but rather saying fine from day one, if I understand some of the questions.
And I appreciate that clarification. Alderman Conley, first of all, I thank you for bringing this up because obviously, it's a problem that is persistent and keeps coming up. But, you know, maybe what we ought to also look at is the, there are different levels of violations.
And that's actually something I'm very much looking into, that like, that public health and safety is a separate, is a separate lane. It's not a weeds, it's not a painting, it's a new lane. And when you, when you land in that lane, you're going to get hit with fines. And that should be, yes, you abate it, but dear God, you let rats and cockroaches build up in this property, you don't, we don't, we don't shrug that kind of stuff off. And if that's a change in what we've been doing, I think it's an important change because people deserve to have clean homes and neighborhoods.
And I think those violations that are more severe, like the ones you described this evening, in order to equip Mr. Harris and his staff with the tools, a part of it is making sure those fines stick.
Yep.
Because it is, it is different than, oh, we let our weeds grow 10 inches tall, so.
Yeah, and I think we should be careful that we not associate tall weeds.
Right.
With a rat-infested house. That's not even apples and oranges, it's apples and rotting maggoty fruit.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I've just been thinking about this stuff a lot.
Corporate counsel, I understand what you're saying on that as far as, you know, when it goes to administrative court, you know, that they may not, what you do is you set the code to where once, if it goes to administrative court, they still go to administrative court. And if they don't fix it, the fines go up on them. I mean, we have to be progressive about this. And, you know, I had the opportunity, and I know Daryl would invite everybody to come to their staff meetings, but I went to their staff meeting one Monday. And I think one of the things I got out of it was the frustration because they go out, they ticket somebody, then they fix it right before they go to admin court, and then it goes away. So they've spent their time and their effort to stop something and they know that it's just going to come around. And I'm sorry, but if weed, and I don't care if it's, if it's against code, and weed violations is a problem in neighborhoods because then you get, you get other types of, you know, varmints that are, that are in the weeds, you know? I mean, it's, but my point is, we've got to start getting, get a progressive, disciplined situation in on this. I just, I really think we need to look at it. I can appreciate trying to get, get people that, you know, that where we don't want to fine people just to fine them. But sometime, you know, sometimes when you speed and you don't really mean to speed, you're still going to get a ticket. And the only way to stop some of this stuff is hit people in the pocketbook. And these landlords that live out of town, that don't want to do it, you hit them in the pocketbook and you keep hitting them in the pocketbook, and then maybe they're going to take care of it. Because I'll tell you right now, what we are doing now, it does not work. It just doesn't work.
So it sounds like we should put a little group together, maybe Alderman Hanauer, Conley, and maybe Alderman Proctor, and come up with a draft ordinance working with Daryl Harris and Public Works.
Sounds like a good group.
What's that?
That's a good group, yeah.
That's a very good group.
And really come forward with that revised process.
And Mayor, I will say, I, like I said, I have been doing some research on this and I would like to, I've, I've got a fair amount ready, and Daryl, I wasn't going to ask you in front of everybody, but I would like to come to one of your meetings.
You're all welcome. Every Monday at 8:30.
Okay.
Anytime. You don't have to say you're coming, just come.
Okay, so I'll be there Monday.
Right.
It's limited to three Aldermen at a time.
Bring treats, no, I'm just kidding.
I can bring treats.
But every Monday at 8:30.
Okay.
We have a staff meeting consistently every Monday to talk about various issues like this and look at.
These kinds of things. Because I will tell you, one thing is, I mean, in most of my, like, my day job, I'm staff and I know what it is to have someone else hand you a new requirement and say, okay, now go implement this. I want to make sure that whatever we hand to your, whatever your staff has given is the right tool also. I mean, I want to have better tools, but I want it to be the right tool so that they can, they can actually implement it with integrity and it makes things better for them. I think if they're doing their job better, we're going to see improvements in our neighborhoods, and that's really important.
I want to applaud Hanauer because he came without being sauntered and in that nature and just came to the meeting. And one thing I want to commend him about, he didn't give the solution. He asked what was going on reality-wise and how he could be essential in trying to get a cure or make it a little bit better enforcement. So he's a great listener. And I think it was good for the inspectors to hear from someone from Alderman, also the mayor's been in our meeting and stuff too as well, to say, hey, what are you guys are doing? What things are you encountering? And how can we help to assist you in your everyday venture, so?
Yeah, because I do think there's a general consensus. We are, we are going to make changes, but I want to make sure that the changes we make are ones that, that work appropriately. I've spent way too many times dealing with, you know, who wrote this? Because it's not going to happen. So I want, I want to make sure that we write it, we write things with your inspectors and mine too so that we can be effective. And they can be effective.
Thanks, Daryl.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Daryl.
I'll see you Monday morning.
All righty.
Is there any other new business? Individuals signed up to speak? Bob Moore?
If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Bob Moore. I live at 1711 King Drive in Normal, Illinois. I grew up in Springfield on the north end, went to high school with Doris. Yeah, laughter. I coached Chuck Redpass's son in JFL football for 10 years. I'm the second generation of a Springfield Fire Department family. We have three generations on there now. The fire department has been very good to me, been very good to my family. Forty years ago today, I joined the Springfield Fire Department. Don't ask me where them years went. Now I want to give back to the city, a legacy, you might say. It involves a building. It stands alone, it's empty, and waiting for a new purpose in life. Since 1957, it has been an auto repair shop, a dry cleaners, an appliance store, a trophy shop, and lastly, a pawn shop. It started as a horse-drawn fire apparatus station. And it's at number four on the facade. It's located at the corner of Sixth and North Grand. I'm sure everybody has seen it at one time or another. Approximately 14,000 cars drive by it every day. It's sitting right between the old State Capitol, Lincoln Museum, and on the way to Lincoln's Tomb area. With the restaurants, shops, a pharmacy, hardware store, gas stations, all in walking distance. I've been dreaming about it. It's been calling to me. But what can I do with it? What I would like to do, it became very clear, take it back to its glory. I want to turn it into a small museum. Nothing extravagant, but I want to create a showcase, the history of the Springfield Fire Department honoring the past, present, and future firefighters, from the bucket brigades to horse-drawn steamers to the modern-day fire department. Chief Rainey has been very receptive to my idea and has indicated the Springfield Fire Department will help in any way that they can. I have a 1957 American Le France fire engine in my own personal collection. You may have seen it at St. Patrick's Day parades, at the State Fair Parade the last few years. And along with interactive displays, photos, tools, and equipment, it will all be instrumental in educating the public on how the fire service came to be, how it operates, and how to be fire safe. Community involvement will be crucial in making this all come together. Maybe business leaders, Kiwanis, VFWs, American Legions can all get behind me and sponsor a kiosk, help pay for one of the old sliding poles. We're not out to make money. Today, I went down and filed for a not-for-profit. And also, once I get that, I will file for a 501(c)(3). Bank of Springfield is working with me on updating the financing that I'm trying to get to purchase this building. I'm keeping my fingers crossed knowing it is going to involve electricians, plumbers, painters, carpenters to help restore this grand old building to what it looked like back in its heyday. With the new windows, doors, paint, right down to the new fire poles, it will stand proud once again for the citizens and visitors to the city to enjoy. Mavien and the city council could make it a city landmark. I'm reaching out to all the citizens, business leaders, and the city council of this great city of ours to stand behind me and together, we can make this building the Springfield Fire Museum. A legacy for my beloved hometown, Springfield, Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like a great project. This is Bob Hamilton. Bob Hamilton here?
No.
David Allen?
No.
Anybody else wish to address the council? If you come forward and state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Michael Higgins, 1808 Dial Court. Question, going back to the problem properties and placarding the properties, I understand bad tenants, I understand bad landlords. What happens to the tenant when the landlord is a bad landlord and creates a problem property and the property is placard with a family of little means or not that many, much money or whatever to move to a new property? What happens to them? Do they just get kicked out on the street? We all talked about the landlords, what about the tenants who are good tenants but unfortunate enough to live with bad landlords?
I think we get the Red Cross, that's a good point. I think we could hopefully get the Red Cross involved in that situation.
Anybody else wish to address the council? If you could come forward, state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Walter Lad, and I happen to be the neighbor of a rat-infested home and probably the one that's scarred that poor the neighborhood at for life. My real question is, is what happens when they come my direction? We've spent the last two weeks putting miles of steel wool and spray foam insulation and I put a sewer cap in, covering everything I can, and I don't feel comfortable that I've got 100% of it because they will get in however they want. Now, I'm not here to make any demand. will get in however they want. Now, I'm not here to make any demands. It's a question I truly don't know the answer to. What does happen when they decide, oh, Orkin's here, let's go over there. It's warm, they got food. So, that, that's all I have to say, or ask, honestly. I, I just, I don't understand, but thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything you've been doing.
Yeah, well, and I just want to, so Walt is the one who actually originally got this started, which raised the awareness so that I knew what was going on. I, I do want to say, and I, I hope other people take this to heart, really good way to get something accomplished in the city is to go ahead and, you know, also pick up the phone and call, or email your City Council member, because I, I don't, I'm not on that app very often. Yeah, you may be banned now.
Yes.
But I, I hope not, because it's important that we know, because that's the way for us to take action. And I, you know, hindsight being what it is, I wish we could have known about this three or four months ago, at least, to then put pressure on the landlord. So, my understanding, and I'm, I'm not an exterminator, but I, and maybe someone else can speak to this, but my understanding is that there's going to be, you know, interior and exterior trapping? Is that right, Daryl?
Daryl can talk about what they've done so far, and as far as Public Works.
Beyond your dogs having a, a field day with these awful things, and...
You're the JRT guy. I've heard about you.
Yes.
We're very proud of the, of them for doing their hard work.
As I said before, you know, I've told, talked about previously that the city is also doing the sewer deal and stuff as well. That's doing within Public Works. But we leave that to the experts. That's why we call Orkin, who has the qualifications and expertise to see how it's treated. So I would suspect that they'll probably treat the interior and the exterior. And I can't state that, leave that to the ones who make a living actually killing rodents and things of that nature.
Yeah, and it's, it's not my experience. But again, this is, and Walt is just one representative, and thank you for coming tonight, by the way, I really appreciate that, of a larger group of neighbors who are looking at this house and going, you know, I don't have the time or, or resources to go and stuff steel wool into every crevice in my house. Are these coming? So it's, it's again, it's, it's a highlight of, this is a bigger issue, and we need to keep an eye on it.
Do you know their method of containment?
They have several methods. One is you can do glue boards, poisonings, to trap men, to, it's several different methods they'll probably take on. Every sentinel will probably do a little bit different than Orkin. Orkin, so they look at the situation, they look at the areas in which I, I went to the property on Thursday, myself, with our inspector, and I, there are some injuries and stuff that I would think that's more than evident, where they come in at. So I would think that Orkin would see those same type of injuries as well, and do something to shore it up, or...
Corporation Council, is it within our realm that we could ask Orkin to treat the entire block, and charge the, the, you know, the particular landlord, or the property owner, to pay for that coverage?
Well, I don't think our, I don't think our ordinance would allow that, whether or not a court would order that as a remedy. I'm not certain.
That'd be a little late at that time.
Pardon?
That'd be a little late at that time.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as immediate, you said we could take immediate action. Couldn't we ask what the cost is, having to treat the whole entire neighborhood, and then put a lien on the property?
Well, I don't think there's a, a mechanism for putting a lien on a property absent some type of a court order or proceeding. You know, you're talking about government being able to go onto private property with, you know, normally you would get warrants, or you'd get orders of different kinds. So, when you're talking about beyond just the location, you know, just that specific location, if it's truly a public health and safety issue, that might be something the department itself may want to address. Or Public Health, County Public Health Department. And I am going to look at the question that Alderman Redpath raised, about jurisdiction of the county public health vis-à-vis the Public Works Department, because I'm not clear on exactly where that jurisdiction starts and stops. So that's one area. I did make a note to check, and I'll get with Daryl on that part, to make sure we clarify that issue.
Anybody else wish to address the council? You'd come up, state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name's John Raven. I'm the former tenant at six nineteen South Lincoln Avenue. I can help give you guys a little bit of information on what we went through there. When we, when we moved in, the beginning of May, very end of April, we had moved in, there was no kitchen. The kitchen was all sitting in the dining room. They were trying to refinish, put the kitchen back together from a bursted pipe that had happened some time before we had moved in. I had, I had had to move back to Springfield from Peoria area, due to my mother's failing health condition at the time. She was hospitalized. My mom was ninety-three years old at the time. She's now ninety-four. I had to come back home to help my sister with my mother. I have a ESA dog, emotional support dog, and he's a German Shepherd, which makes it kind of difficult to find a place to live, even though by law, they have to accept it. You know, I just don't really want to try to force that on people, because then you're gonna have nothing but trouble. I came across the house, I grew up on that side of town, over in Passville Park. Just as the Alderman said, it's a very beautiful area, you know, and it's close to home, so that's why I jumped on it. Within the first ten to fourteen days, when we saw the first rat, I called Marcia up at the time. That's not her problem. They were exact words to me. And I said, well, I go, it's not my problem. You own the house, we need it taken care of. Well, that's when the threat started, with my husband's real estate attorney. There's nothing you can do about it. I, I, I don't like being threatened. I don't take threats lightly, you know, and I don't back down. She kept pushing the fact, every time something broke in the house, it's our responsibility, it's our fault. Now, if I, if I wanted to pay for exterminations, broken things that break, fall apart, repairs, all that, I would buy a house. I didn't want, I, I'm fifty-five years old, I don't want the responsibility. I like just, hey, this is broke, fix it. That's not how it happens. She wants us to fix it, not take it off the rent, still pay the full rent, because if we take it off the rent, we'll be charged late fees and interest per daily, and it just keeps doubling, 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 and doubling. Send her the bill, and wait for her to reimburse us if she feels fit. Not gonna happen. The kitchen sink, the faucet fell off within the first thirty days. She wasn't gonna get us to do it, and that was our responsibility. So, we, from May all the way up until we left in December, well, I left right the week before Christmas, my roommate left Friday. We had a screwdriver to work the sink, so we could do dishes and stuff like that, because the rats chewed through the stove, made a nest in the oven. We haven't had a stove, we haven't been able to cook in the kitchen since end of June, beginning of July, somewhere around there. Around the same time is when they chewed through the dishwasher. We found that out when we did dishes, and ended up having like a little kiddie pool as a kitchen. All the plugs, except for one on an opposite wall from the stove in the home where the rats were at, every outlet's been chewed up, no power whatsoever, except for one on the opposite side of the kitchen. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not an expert when it comes to fire, but I worked construction for many years. Wires like that, I'm pretty sure are a fire hazard. But bottom line is, everything was coming out of our pockets, was she wanted. We used to, as I had a long discussion with Alderman Conley yesterday, we had to use channel locks to take showers, to get the water off and on in the bathtub. We had a screwdriver to work the kitchen sink. Like I said, we had no, hardly any, well, we had the one plug in the kitchen, but we couldn't use the stove, we can't use the oven, cause the rats were living in the oven. Marcia's answer is, buy poison, buy traps, buy all that. Well, my dog, there's, that's not a good idea, putting poison down, traps, sticky pads, cause he's gonna end up with it. Now you're telling me to kill my dog, is how I'm taking it. She, she stopped talking to me in June, cause I finally got to a point where I was so sick of her threats about her husband. I just said to her, you know what, I have a cousin who's an attorney, so now we both have free attorneys. If you want to go down this road with me, let's go. But I really don't think you want to do this. Well, as we see, we, she went down that road. As for the eviction that kept being brought up, yeah, she, she is trying to, she did try to evict us. It was over two months' worth of rent. That two months' worth of rent came out to seventeen hundred dollars. We had called in, it was triple, or AAA, I think it was called, or A1 extermination. My roommate, he, he's got all the information, and I, I can get it, and give it to the Alderman if you guys would like. And they came in to do an extermination, cause just not the rats, but the rats brought in all kinds of bugs, and a whole nother instant infestation. It cost us seven, pretty much seventeen hundred dollars to get all that done at the house. I, I'm not a rich person. I'm on social, I just got put on social security. My roommate doesn't make a whole lot of money, you know, seventeen hundred dollars is a lot of money. We told her what, what happened, we sent her a copy of the bill. Where's my rent? Well, rent's eight fifty a month. Here's your two months' rent. There's the bill. We got a bill for, I want to say it was around twenty-five hundred, because that was the late fees, all the interest. She keeps building and building and building, cause the seventeen hundred dollars doesn't count. And then, when I got, got real upset about it, she's like, well, look at your lease. I looked at the lease, and she's correct. It does say that tenant is responsible to get rid of rodents, infestations, blah, 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 if caused by the tenant. Well, you know, I'm sorry, but when you move in, and within the first two weeks, you got, you got rats, not my problem. You have, one side of that house has been uninhabitable for...
Six years.
Six years. Walt being our next-door neighbor, I, I got, I get some information from him of, of the house, because he's been there longer. And it's been uninhabitable for six years. Nobody's looked at it, nobody's done anything to it. Where do you think the rats are coming from? You know, and you want to put that on me, and blame it on my dog? No, my dog's killing them. My dog had up to seven kills before we moved out. You know, and Walt's dog, dogs and cats, they're way beyond my dog. And when I talked to my roommate, within the last week, there, he's killed, he's thrown away over twenty rats in the past week. And, you know, I, the bottom line is, she needs to be stopped.
Is this a, is this a house that was turned into two apartments?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, it was a house. They split it in half. There, the part that we lived in was a two-bedroom upstairs-downstairs, and then the other side was just a one-bedroom. And, but that one-bedroom side, I guess, had some damage done to it, and they, I, I'd never been to that side, but I know there's a lot of damage in it. Nobody can live in it. And...
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I think the older neighborhoods are against that.
I, I would agree. Yeah. And, so, you know, I mean, rats just don't show up immediately. They take time. And, but the place is so overrun. I mean, it, it's unbelievable. And, you know, she, she had been able to threaten so many people, and chase them out of her places by using her husband as a catalyst. And, like I said, I'm not one of those people. You know, you want, you want to go down that road, we will go down that road.
So she owns several properties, do you?
From my understanding, she has several property, properties here in the city of Springfield. I, I heard, I know, from what I've been told, she's got one, I think, somewhere on State Street. I don't know where her other properties are at, but I do know she owns more than one.
We'll, we'll find out where she lives.
So, yeah, I mean, and if she's treating this one that way, I, you know...
Yes, Alderman?
There's no more votes, right?
No, sir. How many tenants, do you know how many tenants were there over the past five years?
Before him, there was two female tenants that were there at first apartment. They were excited until they had the joy of the Marcia experience, and they left. But they had gone for, the house had made it for eight months to a year.
Well, you know, coming in front of us is probably the most important thing, cause Alderman Conley is, is gonna take this head-on. And I can tell you that we needed, we needed to know this experience that y'all are going through, because, you know, we're contemplating all kinds of different avenues of how we're gonna attack this problem, but it's gotta be attacked. And we're, I think you, you got our attention, and I can tell you that, that the mayor said, we're gonna probably have to put together a group and, and take a look at this, and find tougher solutions for the, for the habitual violators. And this lady obviously is a habitual violator.
And, you know, like I said, I mean, she, she is able to intimidate so many people.
Right.
And she just came across somebody that, you know...
And people should not have to live like that. So, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
But I was the one who called the city inspector for them to come out that day. So in case you guys are, that's, and Walt did his, his thing, and that was that. But thank you, thank you for your time.
And I, and I just want to say, John, I, I appreciate you and Walt, both of you, for the, the background and assistance you've given me. And, and I, I'll say it again, this council is only as good as the information we get from people. And I appreciate you standing up firm on that, because I, I've been, I've been in a place where, you know, it's, you know, you need, you need somewhere to live. I've, you know, I've been in a much lower-income status myself, and, and trying to find somewhere safe and clean, and it's difficult, and it's not easy. And, and when you feel like you're at the mercy of someone who holds it over your head, it's a very difficult position to be in. And, and I appreciate you standing up for, for yourself, but you're also standing up for other people, and we're gonna stay true to you on that one, and, and respect that.
I appreciate it. And thank you for everything you, you started with, and thanks to the council, and everybody for everything you guys have planned to do going forward. Thank you. So, thank you for your time.
Alright, take care.
Anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or we're adjourned by one.